Just along as quickly as possible. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, if you could call the roll, please.
Mr. Seifried.
He is excused.
Mr. Ernst.
Present.
Mr. Ramon.
He is excused.
Ms. Fizami.
Also excused.
Ms. Harwitz.
Away on travel, she's excused.
Mr. Each.
Present.
Mr. Castor.
I understand he's also out of town, excused.
Mr. Privatell.
Present.
Ms. Schwartzbaum.
Present.
Very good. Are there any amendments to the agenda, staff?
No amendments, Mr. Chair.
I'd like to offer a motion that we move the second item of the night, the CBOs that are here, to the first item, so that we can go ahead and hear the presentations and then do the first item second. I'll entertain a motion.
I beg your pardon?
Second. Mr. Each moves second by Mr. Privatell. Very good. Approval of the minutes for the September 4th, 2012 meeting. Mr. Each approves the minute, second by Mr. Privatell. Any communications from staff? Here none? Continued public hearings? There are none. So we'll go ahead and move right to the tonight's agenda. First item that we will go ahead and address then, let me get my paperwork here lined up, because we have a lot of paperwork tonight. I'm sure I get the right ordinance.
Resolution.
There we go. This is PC 14-12, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of North Miami, Florida, approving the award of fiscal year 2012 and 2013, the community development block grants, CDBG funds, to not-for-profit community-based organizations known as CBOs, providing for an effective date and for all other purposes. May I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record. Tanya Wilson-Sujor with the Community Planning and Development Department. The staff recommendation is that the planning commission hear presentations from the community-based organizations, those are CBOs, that submitted proposals for the fiscal year 2012, 2013, CDBG funding, review staff's recommendation and provide its recommendations or concurrence for submittal to city council. Just to provide some background information, pursuant to US HUD regulations and consistent with the fiscal year 2012, 2013 action plan adopted by city council on June 12th, 2012, the total amount of federal funding available under the public service category is $105,000. The city has customarily allocated $15,000 for the North Miami Foundation for Senior Citizen Services from the public service category. $30,000 was allocated to Youth Employment Summer Program, leaving a balance of $60,000 for not-for-profit community organizations. Ten proposals with total requests of $115,916 were received from the CBOs for fiscal year 2012, 2013 for CDBG funding. This is an annual exercise, I'm sure the board is familiar with the process. We have the project manager Carolyn Francis Royer that's here to talk about the submittal process and actually the selection process for the CDBG funding allocation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Carolyn Francis Royer, Community Planning and Development Department. The evaluation committee was comprised of the Community Planning and Development Department, the Budget Department, the Police Department, and the North Miami Library. Each proposal was reviewed and ranked in your packages, the scores are there. The criteria we used is also included in the staff report. We look at areas such as leadership and capacity, past performance, key staff that's implementing the programs, organizational strength, and performance measurements. The CBOs are here to present a short presentation, limit to three minutes, to let you know what they have to offer. And, you're ready?
Thank you very much. As is customary in the past, some of you may have participated in this process in the years past, we would like to try to keep comments to three minutes, and we will begin with the first organization listed in our docket, and that will be Berry University, Peace in Every Relationship, P-I-E-R, peer. This is a program which will train five college students to provide educational programming about domestic and dating violence and healthy relationships to local high school and middle school students in North Miami during 2013 spring and fall semesters. The grant requested was $9,996. The staff recommendation is for $4,000. Good evening. May I have your name, please?
Good evening. My name is Laura Finley.
And your address?
I am Assistant Professor of Sociology and Criminology at Berry University.
Okay, great.
Begin?
Begin, please.
I have a small handout, if that's appropriate, to give to everyone?
Sure.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
This is not enough paper. This is not enough paper. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, and I really appreciate the planning commission hearing us as well as considering our proposal. I want to begin with my short three minutes, and I'm a fast talker, so that helps a lot, by explaining where I wear this gown today. I wear this to honor a woman named Gladys Ricart. On the handout that I just passed out, she is the picture of the beautiful lady in a wedding gown on the cover sheet. She was murdered by her abusive ex-boyfriend just moments after that picture was taken on September 26th, 1999. I wear it also to honor the approximately 1,300 victims who are killed from domestic violence every year in the United States, and the 192 murdered victims in the state of Florida in 2011, all at the hands of somebody who is supposed to love them. The program we've proposed, called Peer, or Peace in Every Relationship, is an effort to address domestic and dating violence in our community. It seeks to raise awareness about abuse and to educate and empower young people to develop and support healthy relationships. We know that domestic and dating violence are community problems and therefore must be dealt with in a community fashion. They require a community response that integrates all facets of our community. The College Brideswalk, which was started to honor Gladys Ricart, was one such community effort, and we're thankful that we've received continued support in the last three years from the mayor's office and the North Miami Police for this great event that's brought together not only Berry University, but six other community schools and colleges in South Florida, as well as other area organizations. And we again appreciate that support. We've even been recognized as College Brideswalk Day, the Friday before Valentine's Day. We seek to build on that event as a kickoff for this program, as well as a culmination of this program, that can offer more extensive education to our youth to prevent abusive relationships. Again, the College Brideswalk would be the kickoff and the end point for Peer, which is a peer education program in which 10 college students would be trained to teach and mentor middle and high school youth, as well as to develop their own social change projects on campus or in the community. The CDC has previously called peer education a promising practice in violence prevention, so we're building on the literature to develop a program that is a best practice. We also know that young people who are involved in abusive relationships typically tell their friends first, if ever telling anyone else, so peer educators can be ideally suited to help victims locate the right assistance. Our program is built solid community collaborations with service providers, so in the event that we identify any victims of abusive relationships, we can call on Berry's Counseling Center, our partnership with No More Tears, and other collaborations to provide immediate services. Our program also proposes to acknowledge those high school and college victims who are struggling to continue their education, as we know that continued education and employment are significant barriers to leaving abusive relationships and remaining in safe relationships. So we're proposing to honor three victims at the high school or college level who are seeking continued education, providing them mini laptops and internet service, with the hopes that that will help them continue their education and break through that barrier. Our team, that involves student and faculty representatives from Berry, as well as six other South Florida universities, and as well as other area nonprofits and organizations, has already been reaching out to South Florida youth for the last two years, addressing Girls Involved in Women of Tomorrow, the Honey Shine Mentoring Program, Pay Center for Girls, the Young Women's Prep Academy, as well as Students at Grotony Elementary, Morning High School, Edison High School, and Robert Morgan Technical School. We seek to expand that capability to reach young people in the areas closest to our proximity of Berry University, and thus this funding would allow us to do that. Specifically, we want to continue our relationship with Morning High School and reach out more significantly to the North Miami schools, as well as to Miami Country Day. We've already met with the student affairs officials at Miami Dade Schools to support our program, and have agreed to help open the doors for us to provide these mentorships and training presentations to their students. I want to just-
If you could wrap up.
I'm sorry, am I done?
Yeah, go ahead and wrap up.
Okay. I wanted to conclude by emphasizing that we believe this program also benefits the city of North Miami, in that the College Brideswalk and this continued effort receives significant media attention last year, including Miami Herald, WLRN, and Power 96, and we believe it allows for further continued community collaborations that will help prevent abuse and enhance the quality of life for all the citizens of the community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from commissioners?
Your students, your students that are going to be teaching this course, they're going to go to the high schools in North Miami?
Correct, yes.
And how much the, approximately, how many classes?
To be determined, but we're hoping that each student that we would provide a stipend to, to be a mentor, would go to at least two different classrooms.
How many?
We're going to train our students, and they'd go to at least two different classrooms, preferably more than that, but it would be scheduled at the, you know, leisure of the schools.
How many total classes are we looking at?
A little bit, to be determined, depending on what the school's needs are. I mean, it could be as many as requested, depending on our students' availability and theirs.
Give me a number, please. I mean, you've given your money, but you-
Absolutely. We wrote in our proposal, a minimum of two per student. Again, we're hopeful for more, but we wanted to put a minimum parameter on it.
Two classes per student, and you have four students?
We would have five students each semester, so we'd have five students at Berry University at the spring semester, and five students again in fall semester, and so that would be each student reaching two classrooms, potentially, so 10 different classrooms in the spring and 10 again in the fall, at a bare minimum, with the hopes of more. In all honesty, we've already reached more than that, but again, we wanted to put a low parameter on it, just to make it sure it appeared as a feasible proposal, as opposed to a pie in the sky.
So you're looking at 20 classes for $4,000?
Yeah, because we know that to entice students at Berry University to be able to participate and to accommodate their schedules, we needed to be able to provide them a small stipend for their work, as well as provide their transportation costs, as many of them, you know, can't afford to go all over the community without, you know, a little bit of travel monies.
What's the background on the students that are doing the training?
The students that would be our mentors would be students in psychology, sociology, or counseling, students who already have interest in some schooling in this background. There's a selection process we'd go through where they would apply for, to me, myself, as well as the other organizers of the program, and then we would select, after an interview process, the students that would be the most ideal mentors, based on their knowledge, but also their leadership skills, their ability to reach a young population.
So we're looking at approximately $200 for class?
In addition to the stipend for the students, as we require the materials, what we would expect to do, and what we've done in the past, is provide them extensive handouts, as well as do some art space activities. We also want our students, and what we wrote in the proposal, to develop their own social change projects in the community, so that we're looking not only at teaching young people, but also in developing some projects that can help better the community and/or the campus, and those, again, would be developed in conjunction with a leadership team.
How long is the class?
Again, depends on what the school needs.
Is it an hour session, a half-hour session?
Right. Whatever their classroom schedules are.
You're saying it's on the platform, what I'm trying to get at, ma'am, is on the platform, you're going to go 20 times, actually, on the platform or in the classroom? We're looking at a minimum of 20 times, for an hour each, or a half-hour?
Around an hour. I mean, most schools are on either a 50-minute schedule or an 80-minute schedule, so whatever the parameters are their classroom is. Some of the schools have been past, requested for us to do an assembly that was two hours long, so we want to be able to meet the flexible needs of the different schools. Some of them have asked us not to present during a class, but after school instead, so we're just going to, again, try to be flexible to what the school, would work best for the school.
I saw your domestic violence parade, I guess it was this past, before the summer, I think, in conjunction with-
Last February was the last walk.
At marching down 16th Avenue. The question, I have, you know, 200 bucks for, your cause is very noble. I was a police officer for 33 years, and I remember going to domestic violence cases when I started, and we couldn't do anything about it. Usually ended up in tragedy. The husband got shot, or the wife was beaten, or-
Right.
And I agree, it's a serious issue, and if we can nullify the type of violence in the home before it gets any worse, it's a good thing. I just want to get the most bang for the buck, and it seems to me that, you know, $200 for a young person going in there on the platform for an hour, maybe you should give me that job, I wouldn't mind doing it.
Well, you know, but that also, money goes into training these students to do that. Some of them have some background through their coursework, but it's not something that's overtly taught at the universities, so part of the programming is to teach these college students not only about the issue in a way that they can really go in and be prepared to deal with all the questions that might come out from young people, but also to teach them how to present that to young people.
Can you give me, I had to lead the diocese last year on, on my end of the grand stuff because of the conflict, but can you tell me what you did last year, approximately?
Last year, we've done these presentations completely pro bono, based on the school's call and request, and pretty much it was me.
How about how many classes did you give last year?
I presented to myself at least eight, and that's just on my own personal schedule.
Was that on yourself, and how about your-
And we had a different peer education program last year that was funded through an Avon Foundation grant, and they reached, I want to say, probably 20 classrooms, roughly, total.
Did you receive any money from the city last year?
No, we did not.
Okay.
The city did support us, though, however, with providing police officers for the walk, and so we really appreciated that, but not for this particular program.
If we approve this tonight, we can get an after-action when this is done this year, please?
I'm sorry?
An after-action report on how many classes, how many people, how many pupils you reached out to?
Absolutely, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for the questions.
That's quite right.
Any other questions?
Yeah, it seems like a very worthy initiative, and I could see that it is the early stages and such. I think to follow through on some of the, just, it seems like you're still getting your footing on this, and it would make sense, there is a concern to get sort of the biggest bang for the buck, as always, and to reach the largest number of students, but then again, there's probably the dilemma of having a relatively new or young college student presenting to a large group is a little bit more difficult than an intimate group, an individual classroom.
Correct.
So that's one question. It would be nice if it could be more of a team approach, and it does go to an assembly, because probably the people that may need this most are the ones that are not going to volunteer to go to a session. You kind of have to capture them and present to them. If it's a voluntary thing after work-
Right.
You're not going to get your target, you get everybody but your target audience, probably.
Correct.
That's just sharing a thought. But I hear what you're saying, and it's trying to get, I think it's a good time to give this program a chance, a little bit of a connection with the city, support from the city, to be able to find out how it progresses through the course of the year.
I appreciate that, and, you know, in honesty, in the last two years, the school requests have been overwhelming, and we've not been able to accommodate it, because we've not had any staff or students trained to do it, so we're hopeful that if the city was eager to fund this, we'd have that body of people who could accommodate the various requests, because we do know this is an important issue, and the school board is behind integrating this kind of education into the schools in whatever way possible. So I really appreciate the comments and the questions.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next CPO is Food for Life Network Incorporated, Mr. Tom Petrogalo. This is a grantee who had, was a recipient last year. They deal with persons with HIV. They home-deliver groceries for persons living with HIV and AIDS. Will provide up to four low and moderate-income North Miami residents living with HIV and AIDS with weekly home-delivered groceries and to prepare 21 nutritionally balanced meals and snacks. The grant request was for $1,200, or $420. Staff recommendation is for $9,000. Is the representative for Food for Life Network present? Okay, very well, we'll move on to the next organization. Haitian Americans Youth Task Force, also known as H-A-Y-T-F-O. Their program type is youth programming. Its annual youth empowerment culture events will provide, will provide, will provide North Miami middle, high school, and college students with empowerment workshops and college fair, eight weeks of cultural dance classes, and a cultural graduation celebration, recognizing middle, high, and college students graduating with GPA of 3.0 or higher. The grant request was for $10,000. The staff recommendation is for no funding. Good evening, sir. May I have your name and address, please?
Good evening. My name is Joseph Wozie, I'm the executive director of the Haitian American Youth Task Force. The mission of the, the mission of HATFO is to promote education, youth-
Sir, could you speak up a little bit? We're hearing trouble listening to you.
The mission of this organization is to promote education, youth development, and student retention in school. HATFO has requested funds to support its annual cultural youth empowerment event. The first round of activities is a five-month dance workshop that will take place at the North Miami Middle School from January 18th to May 17th, 2013, where 13 middle school students will learn about the traditional HATFO Haitian dancing folklore to perform at the HATFO 13th Annual Cultural Graduation Celebration in May. The second program is the HATFO 13th Annual Youth Cultural Graduation Celebration that will take place at the Miami College North Campus on May 29th, 2013. This event is being organized by HATFO in partnership with the Miami College North Campus, Miami County Public Schools, Miami County Commission District 2 and 3, with Mr. Jean Monestim and Mrs. Audrey Monson, and other community organizations. The purpose of this program is to honor eighth and 12th grade students graduating, graduating at the end of their school year with their GPA 3.0 or above. We recognize them with certificate awards, gift certificates, and scholarship. Last year, HATFO distributed a, awarded 232 middle school students, middle school and high school students. The last one is the Fifth Annual High School Student Empowerment Workshop that will take place at the auditorium of North Miami Senior High School on November 17th, 2013. Our high school students will learn from this workshop about life in college and how to find the right mentor, admission in college, how to choose a major that works for you, financial process in college, learning tips to stay away from drug while in college, how to deal with time and stress management. The purpose of this program is to keep our students busy in positive thinking, and help them from being involved in gangs-related activities. In our community, lots of parents are working more than one job to keep track with their household responsibilities. There's a lack of supervision and monitoring from the parent to their children after school. HATFO has tried for the last 13 years, you know, to, to help the students participate in our program, you know, continue their school and not being involved in kind of, in delinquencies activities. So we requested $12,835 dollars to support those events.
Okay, sir, do we have any questions from the commission? None?
I have one to staff, if I may. Staff recommended zero funding on this?
Question is for staff, why the zero funding recommended?
If you look at the scores, the individual score sheet, there were several issues with the actual proposal, especially the budgets.
Yeah.
There were some inconsistencies in the budgets, where we couldn't tell if it was requesting $12,000 or $10,000. That's why the, your spreadsheet reflects $10,000, and he said $12,000. So the proposal itself had some deficiencies, and also, they scored pretty low on past performance. There was a past grant that was submitted, and they had some compliance issues, and that also reflected in the scores.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
No other questions?
I have none.
That was my question.
Yes.
No, that was it.
All right.
So, my concern is that most of the students who participate in our program are from North Miami Senior High and Miami Middle School, not Miami Middle School, from North Miami. We have a large, large number of students who participate in our program every year, and we've been doing this for 13 years already. So, and it is a, it is a, it is a big program, and then, and then I believe that every year it's a, it's a fight between my organization and the city of North Miami to get some funding from the city of North Miami. This is not the first time. Every year, we have to fight, and then, at a certain, at a certain time in the past, we are obliged to ask the city of North Miami to revise their guideline, the qualification guideline, if it is the guideline that, you know, because I don't, I'm not trying to push, but this, I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say is that this program is valuable for the city of North Miami, and they should, they were supposed to have a different, a different, you know, attitude, a different, you know, consideration to the Haitian American Youth Task Force, because lots of our children, we believe that Haitian organizations have to take care of their children. It's the time now for us Haitian, Haitian American to take care of our children on the street. There's, there's too many, too many Haitians today are being killed every, almost every week, every year, every, every day. We Haitian, we have to take care of our own. And every, every year I have to fight to get some, some dollars to support this program, and it is a valuable program.
Can I ask, may I ask a quick?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Privatell.
Obviously, if programs, prior program is acknowledging students who have academic achievement of a certain level. Is your program also, do you feel it's effective to the people coming up, so that those who are, not necessarily graduating, but those that are a few years away from graduation, that it makes a difference with them, that it somehow influences them and gives them the, an interest in doing better on their own grades and their own conduct and such?
So, and then if you, if you look at the record of, of crime rates in the city of North Miami during the past 13 years, you will consider not only Haitian American, but the, the nonprofit organizations that have been working in this city have done a lot, and I, and I, and I know that my organization has been, has done a lot also to make the situation better, because there, it is not, it was worse than what it is now, right now.
If I could maybe just encourage staff for, is there a way that he could be assisted with becoming more compliant in the future, in order to get his paperwork in order, and certain guidelines? Is staff available to reach out to him, or is there some way that, some advice could be given to him in order to let him meet the guidelines that he obviously didn't meet this year or in the past?
Yes, technical assistance is always available to all the organizations.
Could you speak up, could you speak up a little closer?
Yes, technical assistance is always available to all the organizations. There's also a workshop that is conducted prior to the proposal being submitted at the North Miami Library, where they can ask any questions on the proposal, the formats, and even what they're proposing to do if it's compliant with CDB regulations. And they also have to understand it's not just a city program, it's federally funded, and it has to go by the CDPG guidelines.
There are federally, federal guidelines that have to be there, too. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, the next organization is the Houdley- All right, the next organization is the Elderly, Haitian Elderly Center. It is for seniors program. They were a grantee last year. Uh, it's for home care for the elderly. It will provide nine frail elderly North Miami residents with eight hundred, one thousand hours of home health care services, including in-home respite, homemaker, companion, personal care and other services. Is there a representative from the Haitian Elderly Center? Good evening, sir.
What was the staff recommendation here?
The sta, I'm sorry, the staff recommend, uh, recommendation, uh, the grant request was for twenty thousand dollars, staff recommended sixty-five hundred. Good evening.
Good evening.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Daniel Kleegs and eight twenty-two northeast one twenty-five Street, Miami, Florida, right across the parking lot.
Certainly.
Uh, well, um, I think the staff are recommending the grant. I understand that, um, this year that the money is very little. Um, I'm thankful.
Very good, sir. Um, do we have any questions? Many want on, on the panel?
How many, when we should, it's nine, nine families, nine frail, nobody?
Yes. I provide from two to four hours of a homemaker and personal.
Eight hundred, yeah.
Eight hundred and then I had, it's going to be one thousand hours of home health care service. Was it eight hundred or a thousand? Is that a typo?
That's an error, it's a thousand.
A thousand?
It's a thousand, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, we're, we're giving a thousand hours?
Oh, I'm sorry, we're giving a thousand hours of, or eight hundred, what is it? A thousand hours.
A thousand hours.
Yes. Thank you. And a grant, again, the grant request was for twenty thousand, staff recommended sixty-five hundred. Any other questions? No? All right, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next one for the commission is on page two of three will be the Jewish Community Services, Mr. Tom Fleishman. Uh, the grantee is, was approved last year. Uh, the program type is for disabled persons. Uh, the J C S Supported Employment Program will provide developmentally disabled North Miami residents with pre, pre-employment skills, place them on jobs and provide job coaching and on-the-job training. Grant requested was for ten thousand dollars, staff recommendation is seventy-five hundred. Good evening, sir, may I have your name and address?
Yeah, my name's Tom Fleishman, I'm vice president of Rehabilitation and Employment Division at Jewish Community Services, which is also directly across the street at seven thirty-five northeast one hundred twenty-fifth Street. As you have outlined, sir, what we're requesting is part of, of grant, your grant is a partial amount to fund a support and service, support employment services program that we run at there for persons with developmental disabilities that also get referred to us through V R and the agency for persons with disability. Uh, they are city residents. Our, our goal is to see and do intake and referrals on eight folks, process at least four through the program to its entirety with at least two to four individuals getting jobs, um, and receiving long-term follow-up and, uh, job coaching and follow-along. Um, we've been funded by you folks for the last five years. Uh, like I said, pays part of a, a person to do this job, it's a two-person job, uh, as you can see with a job developer and a job coach. If you got any questions from there, I'll, I'll take them.
And, uh, for staff, why did we knock off twenty-five hundred dollars and how much did they get last year? And full disclosure, I work for Jewish Community Services.
Last year was nine thousand.
Okay, so why the decrease?
Well, the committee had to figure out based on the scores what we were going to give to each of the organizations that were funded. So, it was based on, um, on the scores that, on the score sheet.
In other words, to accommodate.
Yes, I think they're number five.
Right.
So, it's, it's fair to say that those having a higher score, cumulative score are getting a higher percentage than those that, across the board, it pretty much worked out that way?
Yes.
Okay. Might point out, I think that's usually been the case over the last couple of years. Everyone must remember that we had a lot more funding in the years past and we were able to, um, to be able to move money around to help organizations.
It's just slightly over sixty percent of last year's amount is what's available this year.
We do have less.
You're doing a total of eight clients.
It is less.
Yes, sir, eight clients. Yes, sir, we're going to help support through this, yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
We also appear to have less applicants this, this year than in some prior years.
That's correct. Okay, any other questions? None? All right, sir, thank you very much. Thank you. Next organization is Nanae Incorporated, Benny Trinidad. Uh, program type is for seniors. It's a center-based elder services program which will provide approximately fifty elderly residents with supportive services, including computer classes, exercise, personal counseling, financial literacy programs, recreational, social activities, health support, home visits and transportation. Uh, they are a former, or a grantee from last year. The grant request was for ten thousand dollars, staff recommends nine thousand. Is representative here for Nanae. Okay, we'll move along to the next organization, North Miami Foundation for Senior Citizen Services, Inc., Debbie Kleinberg. Uh, they were a grantee last year. Again, they also are a seniors program, a home-delivered meal program which will provide eleven frail seniors with two thousand eight hundred and seventy-one nutritious frozen meals annually. They've requested ten, ten thousand dollars, staff recommendation nine thousand. Is representative for that organization here. Very good, we will go ahead and move along to the Russell Life Skills and Reading Foundation. Um, they are, are a youth program. The Russell Reading Room at North Miami will provide up to fifty youth with an after-school program of reading comprehension, phonics instruction, vocabulary building, creative writing, monthly presentations from community leaders and mentors encouraging youth to make positive choices. And I see Mr. Russell is here this evening and we welcome Mr. Russell. The request was for seventy-five hundred dollars and staff is recommending the seventy-five hundred dollars.
Good evening, I'm going to put my timer on here because I talk long.
Go ahead and state your, your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name's Tony Russell. Do I give my personal address or the program address?
Either.
Uh, the program address is one-two-five-hundred Northwest Thirteenth Avenue. It's at Sunkist Grove. Uh, we're a thirteen-year-old, thirteen-year-old organization that started, um, in a small church with ten kids where my mom and I, we just wanted to give back to the community. And very quickly we realized that the problem's not children learning how to do their homework, the problem is that they didn't, they couldn't read. And it's, we, they could memorize a song, they could, um, they could regurgitate information, but as soon as we wrote it down and they read it, there was a loss in translation. They couldn't process information on a piece of paper and then regurg, and then write it down. So, what we did, we changed our focus in two thousand to the fundamentals of reading and writing. Um, is two, there's two, uh, learning techniques. One is whole language and one is phonetics. What we teach, uh, whole, uh, whole language is basically memorization, is about a couple thousand words that we teach all of our children, they memorize them. That's great for comprehension, that's great for reading ease, it's great for, uh, being able to process information and be able to think because the process through the brain is different than phonetically. Phonetically, they're breaking down, um, the structure of the, of the word, understanding root words, suffix, understanding it out. A lot of people, um, if you were, if you went to school before the nineteen eighties, you learn how to read phonetically only. So, now we, what we've done, we've combined both of those theories so our children read faster, comprehend better, uh, and they have a, and they, uh, perform better on the F C A, perform better on standardized tests. Um, and we, we employ teachers that walk them through the process of, um, understanding how to reading right. And what we've learned, if a child has been in our program for at least three years, they're passing the F C A at almost a ninety-eight percent, uh, ninety-eight percentile, um, that they're, um, getting, getting a level three so they can pass F C A. And the, the two percent that have not, really, um, you can't measure by the F C A. Sometimes we get children that are very low and we have to measure them, um, but do our standardized test inside of our organization. So, yes, they're growing, maybe they didn't pass F C A. So, we have a ninety-eight percentile of kids who are in our program that are passing the F C A. Um, and really we just, you know, really we're just teaching kids how to be great. If I can teach a child how to read, they will not be a burden on our, on our system, they will not, um, go to jail. Uh, we have a hundred percent success rate of children not going to jail in our program. Um, and, and for me, that's what we're excited about. How can we change lives? How can we make, um, children better so for the rest of their lives, um, they can read so they can teach themselves, um, and for the entire time? And my time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Um, I, I, I'm sorry, I have a question if I could, Ms. Reed. Um, how many students now do you have? I know that, uh, you were providing up to fifties. What, what's your current enrollment?
Uh, currently, we're twenty-eight. It, it, each year it varies. This year we're at twenty-eight. We've had as high as forty, we've had, you know, as low as twenty-five. It really fluctuates and as the school year goes, we usually gain a couple, um, children throughout the year, so right now we're at twenty-eight.
How many, how many sessions do you usually?
A hundred and forty-four days, two hours a day. So, that's Monday through Thursday over the course of the year. Um, and honestly, if you had to equate that to what Sylvan would, would charge, Sylvan would probably charge each one of those students five thousand dollars apiece over the course of the year. We do it for, you know, a fraction of that cost. I mean, our average cost per child is less than five hundred dollars for the entire year. Um, at that center, we employ three teachers who, um, who invest to them every single day and they walk them through an individual process. So, each one of our students have an individual plan of how they're going to grow academically and we do it all through reading. We've added math and we've added science. Uh, traditionally, we're only reading, um, but what we've learned is that we've put so much emphasis on the, um, reading portion that, you know, our kids are struggling math and we've added math and math is, um, uh, we do it for half of, um, we do it for one hour during the week and we're adding, then we added science as well, well, I'm sorry, sciences we're adding, we added this year for the first time. So, last year we added math, this year we added science. And, and what we found is that we could still teach the reading process through math and we can still teach the reading process through science. So, kids are learning math and learning to read all at the same time. So, we're, yes, we're, we hang our hat on teaching kids how to read, but we also understand the importance of math and science.
Very good, thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Yeah, I guess my question is, uh, is it more like the students are identified at a particular grade level as being maybe a little bit deficient in their skill set and therefore you address that? Or is it that it's a tutoring program that goes on for year after year after year with the same student? Do you try to like have them sort of get to a point and then, then you move on to the next group?
There's, there's definitely some attrition. So, I mean, sometimes we get a child who starts with us in kindergarten and we deal with the, you know, probably eighty percent of our population in all of our centers are the lowest of the low. So, they're very, it's a very transient population, you know, they, um, maybe they start and they're in housing and then once the parent gets on their feet, they move away. So, we, there's a, you know, we do lose children throughout from year to year, um, but what, but what, to answer your question, um, some kids stay with us for the entire time, some kids, you know, are with us for a year, but at the end of the day, we believe that all kids come to us, whether you are low-income or upper-income, we believe in making a melting pot because all we do is manage the information back and forth. What, the, the child that has the haves and the child that has the have-not, they can learn from each other and we just make sure it's positive. So, we stand in the middle and make sure the information going back and forth is positive and then we teach the entire group how to, how to read. And what we've learned, the haves and the have-nots have the same problem. And the middle is a little bit more acclimated academically and we just try to make sure that everybody comes to the middle, if that makes any sense.
And, and most of the students would be recommended by their teachers?
No, really, uh, we, we find, we find, we look for areas, so we don't even target specific students, we target areas. We find it, we, we want to be a part of the community. So, for instance, Sunkist Grove, we're there and then students walk to us. So, we are close by elementary schools and those students walk through our program. Um, so, we don't actually go to the schools and target students, you know, we tell the school about what we're doing. Uh, we really want families that want to be involved in this. We also have a program called Dragonfly Darling's where we invest so much into our students, we also want to make sure we're invested in moms. So, we bring those moms to a one-day event which we just had October twenty-eighth. We had two hundred and fifty moms from all the, from all the parents in our, um, throughout of all our centers. We brought them over to, um, um, the big, what is it? The Broward Convention Center, yes. Broward Convention Center and we had speakers that invested in them. Um, they got their hair, their hair done, the nares done. And the reason we do that, if we invest in the parents, then the parents can invest in the children because if we're teaching children how to read, we also want the parents to be able to come back and invest in those children. And the more we invest in our, our parents and we have seminars, how do you teach your children how to read? Um, there's, there's skills of faking it until you make it, like you don't know the answer, but you don't have to tell your child you don't know. So, we teach the parents how to walk the child through how to figure out the answer while the parent still feels, you know, proud that they're helping their child, but at the end of the day, they get the answers that they need. So, we have, um, it's a, it's a full day and we invest in them, we teach parenting classes, um, we have, uh, classes that teach them about different, um, jobs and things that they can have. We have people that come in who are looking to hire people at that seminar because I know if I can invest in that mom and if she's the only influence in that child, well, that child's going to be better for it, the more successful that mom's going to be.
It, it sounds like there's sort of a magnetic approach, but how do we know that, or to achieve your mission, that maybe the, the worst students, the most problematic students, if they don't know how to get to your location or that you're available, if you don't go to the school and sort of ask the, the staff, who has, who's in the most trouble so we can help them?
Well, what we've learned, we, we can't make people come to us, but we do, we do go to the schools, um, as a start early. We go to the school and we give out pamphlets, we give out information, the guidance counselors do give it to the students, but at the end of the day, if those children don't come to us, we don't have a busing system that's able to bus children, um, to the center. Um, children do have to walk.
But they're aware of your service, though?
Yes, they're, they're absolutely aware of our service, absolutely.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Russell, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Next organization is Stock, Stop Hunger Incorporated. Uh, Tatiana Katz, Executive Director, uh, for low-income persons. Um, program is helping to feed poor, needy and homeless. Will provide two hundred fifteen low and moderate income North Miami residents with once monthly free supplemental food, eight North Miami community service agencies with perishable and non-perishable food products and needy residents with twelve emergency food baskets. The grant requested was for fifteen thousand dollars, staff has recommended seventy-five hundred. Uh, good evening, may I have your name and address, please?
Hi, good evening, I'm Ebony Thomas, I'm representing for Tatiana Katz and Julia Slitman for Stop Hunger. Um, the foundation is located at one-twenty-five-zero northeast Fourteenth Avenue, Unit Two, and the warehouses. Um, Stop Hunger, Inc. has been feeding the poor for over twenty-nine years. Um, we do food distribution every Thursday and, um, throughout my economic struggles up and down, I have become close to Stop Hunger. I am also a recipient of the Food Bank and, um, again, we feed over two thousand families and we're really struggling right now financially with the support. I mean, we have broken equipment, the equipment that needs to be fixed. So, I jumped on board, um, to help promote and bring awareness to the community to keep, um, to keep distributing food. We also have a thrift store that is not doing too well either. Um, so, what it is, we need to, we need a stronger team. I have, I'm putting together a street team right now and some volunteers to bring more awareness of Stop Hunger so we can keep thriving and continue to distribute food. We have supporters such as Costco, Walmart. Um, Walmart is also going to be one of our supporters for our big Christmas party this year. We've been doing it every year, but it has been, been put on hold since two thousand nine, I believe, because we haven't had the manpower to continue to do the Christmas parties and the community, um, that really disappointed the community. Um, we not only support North Miami residents, but it's a regional, we support regionally. So, any questions? So, any questions?
What kind of support do you need, manpower-wise, when you say you needed support?
Manpower-wise, well, I'm reaching out to volunteers. I have been successful on the volunteers, but as far as getting staff to be there, at least eight hours in the office. Because the staff that we did have, they had to leave us and get full-time paying jobs.
So, they were part-time and working off of?
Right, exactly. So, you know, we all have families to support. Like, for myself, I'm working overnight now. I was laid off two years ago from Greenberg Truck, from a law firm, and now, I'm just now finding part-time work overnight. And I have two kids as well. So, this organization has really been supporting me through my hard times.
Any, any questions from the panel? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I believe the last organization is Youth Education Through Sports, or YES, Y-E-S. Mr. Mario Apilon. They're located at 1525 Northwest Hundred Twenty-Fourth Street. The YES Academy will provide youth ages six to eighteen with structured physical activities to promote health, tutoring sessions to North Miami students for academic achievement, and youth crime and gang prevention workshops. The grant request is for ten thousand dollars. Staff recommended no funding. Representative from YES available for presentation. Seeing none, that concludes the list of organizations. And at this time, I will ask for any additional comments from our panel. If they're none, we can go ahead and entertain a motion.
I, I, wait, I'm sorry. I'd like to, if we might consider the Haitian-American Youth Task Force, the gentleman who spoke a little bit earlier, who was receiving zero funding, can there be possibly a small gesture of a thousand or two thousand dollars just to acknowledge their?
Yeah.
And it's, it's, well, it's, so, it's a little bit of encouragement rather than discouragement.
I would think, I, I can appreciate you wanting to do that. However, as staff has pointed out, there were some compliance issues with that as far as the federal guidelines, and I would be very cautious as to issuing funding to that organization if, in fact, staff feels that they haven't completely complied with what is required to ask. There are federal guidelines also.
The other thing I would say is you diluted so much, two thousand dollars is really isn't going to do anything.
Right. And I, you know, I, with what little we have and what little we are kind of giving to everybody else, I would rather reward those that, that are in compliance and have proven to, in their presentation, that they've, they've made themselves worthy to be considered over that.
Is, is, is it more, is it a gray area that they're in? Or is it really they don't comply, period, and we'd be in some sort of jeopardy?
Because there are three pieces to their proposal. So, if we pulled out one piece and funded that for two thousand dollars instead of funding the whole thing, then perhaps we could help them by just letting them decide which of those three pieces was the most important.
But then, they would need to submit a different proposal for CDBG funding. You're saying for them to pull out one part of their proposal for us to fund?
Right.
But, yeah, you can't, you can't.
You're, you're modifying a proposal, and I would urge against that.
Right, right. I would strongly not encourage us to go in that direction, myself.
You know, some of these organizations, the duplicity which I've seen over the years over the course, maybe some of these organizations should urge, like I gave an example, maybe this organization we're talking about should look at the police athletic league and see if there's a way that the police athletic league can help.
Your mic, your mic.
I'm sorry. Maybe this organization, to repeat myself, I'm sorry. I, I've seen a duplicity of organizations doing the same thing over the years, and maybe like this organization, maybe they should go to the PAL and see if the police athletic league, if they can amalgamate with the police athletic league or something of that nature and, and get things done. I mean, but.
Police, keep in mind also that I think staff, staff has balanced out. If you look at the program types, staff has, has addressed every facet of every program type. So, it's, it's been equally distributed among the youth, seniors, low-income persons. So, unfortunately, with ten applicants, eight of them were qualified, were graded out higher, and it pretty much covered the whole spectrum.
Is it proper to make a motion at this time? I'd make a motion that would accept the staff.
As a point of order, as a point of order, before you proceed with a vote, I understand that Commissioner Schwartzbaum had indicated that you, you are an actual employee of one of these entities?
Yes, Jewish Community Services.
Okay. Madam Commissioner, to negate even a presumption of conflict, I would urge, or I would recommend that you consider recusing yourself from that vote, that particular vote. It is only to protect the sanctity of these proceedings.
Do you want us to vote on each one of these individually?
You could, you could separate two. You can do it in two votes. You can separate this particular entity, and then, the remaining commissioners vote on it, and then you can vote on the rest.
All right.
So, as to give you the opportunity of a full vote without the one that may be questionable.
The three of us vote for one organization.
Which organization are we?
So, what we will do then, I will entertain a motion.
No, no, you, well, we're going to go for the majority. It's, it's going to be a majority of the vote. We, we, we have quorum. It's just that it'll be a majority. But I, I would, that, that's my recommendation, that you are an employee.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, then, what the quorum is for, and on that particular vote, as a point of order, would that not then negate the quorum with just three votes on that one item?
Well, you, you have quorum because there's four present. It's one member is recusing.
Okay, on that vote.
Just on that vote.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So, at this time, then, I will entertain a motion to approve the funding for the.
JCS.
JCS.
Yeah, the JCF. Hold on one second, so I can get this correctly written into the.
The Jewish Community Services is the one.
That we go ahead and approve the staff recommendation of seventy-five hundred. Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Prevattel made a motion, seconded by Mr. Reach. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, so that, that has been moved. And the next item, I would like to go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the funding that staff recommended for the rest of the organizations that made their presentation.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Reach makes that motion, seconded by Mr. Prevattel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Commissioner Schwartzbaum, thank you for your candor in presenting that to us.
I was just going to ask to double it, but I thought it is a great program.
Thank you. We, again, thank you, everyone that came here tonight. Appreciate your input. And again, you will also be presenting this to the city council. Our recommendation does go to the city council, and their word is final. So, what we did here tonight may be mirrored, or they may, in fact, want to change what we have sent to them. So, I believe that meeting is scheduled for when staff, the next.
You will be notified, but I believe it will be for the council meeting on the twenty-seventh.
Yes, a letter already went out with the twenty-seventh for council.
I urge you all to attend that meeting, as the city council does have the final authority. And thank you.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Okay, the last item, we'll go ahead and move on to, and that is the question of the change in the sign ordinance. And I will go ahead and read that into the record. Let me get my paperwork once again in order here. Okay, this will be PC thirteen-twelve, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, amending chapter twenty-nine of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled Land Development Regulations by amending Article Five, Division Fifteen, entitled Signs, specifically at section five dash one-five-zero-one, entitled Purpose. Section five-one-five-one-oh-two, entitled Prohibited Signs. Section five dash one-five-oh-three, entitled General Standards. Section five dash one-five-zero-four, entitled Signs Permitted Without a Permit. And Sections five-one-five-oh-five, entitled Permit Signs, permitted signs requiring development review. And Section five dash one-five-zero-six, entitled Comprehensive Sign Program, to allow electronic message centers and electronic scrolling signs in all non-residential zoning districts, and to establish development standards and guidelines for such signs in order to encourage and facilitate economic growth in a manner consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan of the city of North Miami, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification and effective date. May we have staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Staff is requesting that the planning commission recommend approval of the proposed ordinance to amend Article Five, Division Fifteen, entitled Signs, from Section five dash fifteen-oh-one through five dash fifteen-oh-six of the city's land development regulation, and forward said changes to city council for final consideration. Just to give you some background on the purpose and intent, the proposed amendment seeks to allow outdoor electronic message centers and indoor electronic scrolling signs in all non-residential districts, and establish guidelines for development and placement of said signs. The proposed amendment is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan in that it allows local businesses to remain competitive by promoting their goods and services in an innovative, environmentally-friendly manner through the use of electronic signs built with LED technology. Now, in terms of the request, over the years, staff has increasingly obtained requests from the business communities, from churches, and some of our universities and schools for the use of electronic signs, but currently, it's prohibited in the city's code, and the city is requesting at this point that the text amendment be entertained to allow for the electronic message centers. As a part of our research, we included information from the International Sign Association. We have representatives from the International Sign Association that are here with us in helping to craft the language and develop regulations for the electronic sign section of the sign code. Now, as the board is aware, all requests for text amendment must meet the requirements of Section three dash one-zero-zero-four of the land development regulation. And based on staff's review and as outlined in the staff report, we believe that it meets a criteria for the text amendment in the land development reg. You each have a copy of the ordinance with the proposed language for the sign code amendment. And in terms of the amendments that were made, the guidelines specifically speak towards the size of these signs, the height, the brightness, and the location and appropriate placement of the signs. So, staff is recommending approval of that proposed ordinance at this time. And if you have any questions, we can entertain it. Or if you have any technical questions, we have our partners from International Sign Association that would be able to respond to those at the time.
And just for the record, to point out to the commission, in the copy that you have, the underlying items can be found in each one of the sections of the language added, if I'm not correct.
Correct, correct, Mr. Chair.
That addresses just this one particular type of signage. And if you will also note, as was discussed with staff earlier this week, it does not affect any of the existing ordinances with regards to signage and windows. That all still remains in effect. We're merely adding, if I'm correct.
Correct. We're adding new provision for the electronic type of signs that we currently don't allow in the city.
And in each section, you will notice the underlying in the, in the language that has been added. And nothing has been eliminated outside of, I noticed on page eight of sixteen, you deleted some language in, on line G, where you deleted building electrical code compliance, all signs.
Correct, Mr. Chair. You'll notice that there's a duplication between G and H. That was more just being able to clean up the code section to eliminate that duplication. Because it repeats itself in subsection H.
Actually, it was to accommodate a subsequent section. If you notice, the language in G that was deleted was reinserted as H.
Correct.
Verbatim.
Right.
So, it's still in existence, it's just now.
It's in H.
H. And, and the same thing goes between, the language that was deleted in H now reappears in I.
Okay.
And so forth and so on, am I right?
Correct.
Is there a height restriction on the signs?
There's a height restriction. If you turn to Section five dash fifteen-oh-five, you'll see the recommendation for the maximum heights of the electronic signs. We have it for the freestanding, for the shopping center, for the monument signs.
Tony, can you give us a page number?
Oh, I'm sorry, page twelve of sixteen.
Okay.
Is where your dimensions begin. And if you go over to the section, if you go down in the rows, you'll go to the section Electronic Message Centers, and you see the maximums that are being referred to. It leads you right back over to the freestanding signs, shopping center signs, and the ground monument signs. And those were not changing, actually. If you'll notice, there's no underlines there. It's not new language. Those are currently in place. So, what we've inserted is the row for Electronic Message Center, but we're not changing the heights of the signs as it's currently allowed. That's not being altered at all.
And staff, you also have a representative to give us a more in-depth.
Correct. We have our experts from the Sign Association. I want to introduce Mr. James Carpenter, and he's the Government Affairs Specialist from International Sign Association.
Good evening, sir.
And I want to thank them for the expertise and the help they were able to offer, because it's a fairly new technology in terms of the LED signage. As we looked throughout the South Florida area, we couldn't find too many municipalities that had old enough language that we could learn from. I mean, many of the municipalities like North Miami are now exploring it, because, of course, it's becoming popular in the market. It's more environmentally-friendly than some of the older neon signs that were in place. So, we did appreciate the expertise that came from International Sign Association in helping us to craft the language for this code.
Thank you very much. We've enjoyed working with you and really providing our guidance. James Carpenter, excuse me, James Carpenter, International Sign Association, where our main office is located at one thousand one North Fairfax in Alexandria, Virginia. And once again, I just want to say that she, Tanya is definitely correct, that when you look at the code next door, chances are, it is not up-to-date, it isn't current, and it doesn't really deal with everything that needs to be addressed in an electronic message center ordinance like this. And I can really tell you that the ordinance that's drafted covers all the potential issues from having really the, the most up-to-date brightness regulations, which is really the number-one concern we see throughout the country, having inadequate brightness regulations where the signs are literally too bright at night. That causes a real problem. And we were just actually talking about it before, the county is at five-hundred nets. Your requirement uses, I don't want to get into technical stuff, it uses a different methodology, which is very simple, foot candles, and it actually ends up being at least thirty percent less bright than those regulations the county has. And we know it functions extremely well, and, and it works for the end user and for the, and for the businesses. So, we feel really good about that. And I, I just became aware of that today, that the county has the, the, kind of the older type of language, which is exactly what Tanya was talking about, which, which thankfully, the city decided not to look at and adopt, and so. But really, everything else in there is very reasonable and will be really good for the business community. It'll allow them to have these signs function at a reasonable rate without having them flashing and doing all these things that, that a lot of communities don't like. They're going to be a static image that's up there for eight seconds, and then the next one will change instantaneously. You, so you won't even, it won't be, have a. instantaneously. You, so you won't even, um, it won't be, have appearance of movement or flashing, which, uh, a lot of communities opt not to do. Um, so I, I think what you have is very reasonable. It'll allow the business community to advertise a little bit more than they are now, gives them a little flexibility, and time and time again, as the studies indicated that Tanya talked about in her report, they show that it really helps and supports the, the small business especially, because they don't have that, uh, identification that, like a Starbucks or someone else does, that you just look at it, you know who it is. So it really helps the small business, is what we find, time and time again, and, uh, schools, communities, churches, and you name it. So it has a multiple, uh, uses, and it's, um, it works very well. So, any, if you have any questions, if I, if I can answer it, I know Jim Crum with, uh, Daktronics, between the two of us will be able to answer just about anything, I think, so.
None here.
Well, with, with, with all respect, it's, it's, um, your bias is obviously pro signage, and so we have to do that, and we have to sort of entrust this, and hopefully we've got a, a sense of comfort in this. But it is like the NRA dictating gun laws, you know, you know where they're gonna wind up, so, um...
Well, we've never been really equated with, with the NRA.
No, no, I, I didn't, yes, I, I apologize for that being anywhere near that. No, so, but I, I, I do hope that, um, do you see, you're, you're pretty comfortable with this and the facts of, uh, you know, uh, blowback from the community of, are there some areas that, um, that may fall short of being ideal, that could be problematic in the future, that, um, that stand out?
I don't, I don't really see any, the biggest, the biggest problem, like I said before, is the brightness issue with these signs. If it's not properly regulated, it's a problem. Your code, and our standards are as conservative as they can be, where they function, and they work in any environment, light to dark, because if it's a very bright environment, it, it, it's a little lighter to compensate. If it's very dark, the, the sign is a little less bright. So it works in any environment, and here you don't have a, a real bright environment, so you're not, so the signs are gonna be, are gonna fit in really well in this environment, based upon how that code is drafted. Really, in the code, at 50% of your allowable square footage, which is typically around 40 square feet, I believe, 20 square feet, it's relatively small, it's, so there's some communities that don't have a restriction on square footage, allow 100 square feet. That would be more business-friendly. So, yours is really fairly conservative in the approach, but one that'll still support your, your civic groups and, and the business community very well, without, um, you know, there's degrees, and at some point, um, you know, you, you may change that, but right now I think this, this is, I, I think it's a very reasonable code and one that I don't see, um, and, and if we saw any issues, we'd certainly let you know. I don't see any issues with it at all.
Mr. Chairman.
You know, we have a, I think it's a pretty good, pretty good idea. I think many years ago, uh, we were on the cover, and, uh, we were on the cover of National Geographic, um, going back, I guess, in the 60s with sign pollution.
I know where you're going with that.
And I, I think they looked at Biscayne Boulevard, and there was all types of signs out there, and, um, heck, I, I wasn't a resident here, but I can remember reading that. But I, I'm looking at this, and I, I think it's a pretty, pretty restrictive but pretty progressive ordinance that's definitely needed. I, I, when I drive through North Miami Beach on 19th Avenue, I see their new sign up there in front of their city hall, and I'm wondering when we're gonna get ours. I know we were supposed to get a, a sign out there, and I, I think it's good. I think it gives our, our business people at least a competitive edge, and it's not, uh, honky-tonk, or, uh, uh, what would you say, like, like a casino, boom, 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 you know, it's, uh, it's, it's reasonable. It, it really is, and it's, uh, I don't think it's overly glamorous or showy.
It beats the menu boards that you see, uh, on the side of...
I mean, you have eight seconds, and then you change it.
The trailer parked in the middle of a parking lot, that's for sure.
I think my only concern for me at a personal level, sometimes, I live on 124th Street, and to me, that LA Fitness green sign has, has pretty much ruined most of that canal. When you come down at night, in a beautiful moonlit night, halfway down the canal, it's really pretty. The other half, when you hit the middle of the canal, you get this big green LA Fitness light coming down, and giant LA Fitness coming onto our block, and I, I don't want to see that happen to any other block. So, that, that's my concern. I see a smile over there. That's my concern with this sign ordinance and the heights, that no other neighborhood gets to experience what we experienced in Keystone, especially on 124th Street with that LA Fitness beacon coming into our, um, our neighborhood.
I, I, I agree with you. I, I have, uh, for years I had the parking garage from Johnson and Wales shining across the canal and into my, uh, into my living room, actually, and finally I got them to, uh, mask it with trees and landscaping and lower the lights. I, I agree with you.
I don't know why we have to have an LA Fitness sign that you can see from space. It's not that important to see, I mean, that every resident be able to find it, so...
Again, let's, let's not stray too far from, from, the, the matter at hand here is the fact that these are, this is a whole different type of sign that's used in a small business.
I just want to clarify that what's being proposed as a part of this amendment is not the LA Fitness sign. Those are not LED signs, and I believe that's a neon sign.
This is a technology...
High pounding it's in the neighborhood.
That's not what we're encouraging. We're progressing beyond that, and we're promoting digital technology based on the LED signage. So that's not what this ordinance is about.
While we're hoping that, what I, I, I believe the ordinance is trying to also eliminate, again, are the flashing light, chaser light signs, and this, this enables people to have a more tasteful design and get away from that, and to use signs that aren't as blurry and not as bright, by creating this ordinance to allow just this one particular sign and do away with all the other, if I could use the word, trashy effect type of advertising signs that, that people will want to try to use to draw customers in.
Correct.
Um, what we, we need to do, uh, before we advance any further, we need to open this to the public hearing, if I could, and, uh, at this time, uh, the public hearing is now open, and seeing no, no persons, uh, eager to comment on the issue.
I'll say one thing. I'll just, if you don't mind, Mayor, I'll just urge your approval...
Thank you for the, uh, over, uh, chairman.
It is a...
We'll do, thank you.
Chairman, oh, chairman, excuse me. Uh, it's James Carpenter again with ISA, and I just urge you to approve the code and, and appreciate your, um, time, and really that's all I have to say, so, thank you.
Can I just point out, it is 20, it is 20 feet, right? 20 feet is the maximum height that you're concerned about, and that's the maximum height of any type, anywhere, according to...
I guess that's why I asked the question, worried about those.
Let me, yeah, let me, let me go ahead and, uh, let me, let me go ahead before we, we advance that, to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
And then we'll open up comments. Uh, at this point, public hearing is now closed, and now I'll, I'll open up comments to the panel. Uh, Mr. Prevattel?
Correct. You noticed in the spreadsheet that under the shopping center signs, the maximum height that's currently in place, currently, we are trying to change that, is 20 feet in the city.
20 feet.
It's already established.
So we wouldn't get that, uh, very high signage that would then come down and reflect off and blind everybody in the distance? It wouldn't be the same as the LA Fitness situation, the placement. More likely it would be blocked.
Mr. Each?
I have no questions. I'm, I'm happy with your answer.
Any other comments, Mr. Schwartz-Bahn? Okay, uh, there, hearing no other comments, uh...
I make a motion that we approve.
Mr. Each has moved for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Prevattel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion moves, it's unanimous. And the next item of business is, um...
Okay, where's the next meeting?
Set a date for the...
December 4th.
Next meeting?
December 4th, Mr. Chair.
December 4th, a Tuesday. And by the way, we have no old business to attend?
No old business to attend.
Okay, so December, December 4th, next meeting?
Correct.
Uh, move or adjourn?
Still move.
And we are adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Well done, Mr. Chairman.
Good job moving us through very quickly. We have election night here.